Okay, good evening Altadena, Altadenaans and good evening everybody else that is here. We appreciate you coming. We will call the Altadena Town Council meeting for July 17, 2018 to order. The time is 7:10. For the Pledge of Allegiance, we'd like to start with, actually I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Jones.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our local Altadena Pathfinder and Adventure Club. They are part of the worldwide organization sponsored by the Seventh Day Adventist Church. There are over 2 million young people in grades one through 12 that participate in this organization. Pathfinder Club activities range from community service and mission projects to outdoor activities such as backpacking and camping. Members participate in trips to national parks, museums, businesses, and places of local or historical interest. Their community services activities include working with the local homeless shelters such as Union Station. They recently distributed socks and other useful items for the homeless in our area. The Pathfinder Club is an organization where growing up and learning are synonymous with fun.
Would the audience please stand for the presentation of the colors? Color guard, attain hut. Mark time, march. Forward, march. Present arms. Pledge of Allegiance, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order arms. Color guard, prepare to post. Color guard, post. Color guard, right and left face. Dismiss. And thank you so much for the Altadena Pathfinder Club. Let's give them a round of applause. We're going to go to item number 1.2 and that'll be roll called by the Recording Secretary, Councilmember Matthews.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Council, when your name is called, please acknowledge your presence. Nestor Delatorre.
Present.
Okori Izimi.
Present.
Veronica Jones.
Present.
Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Jennifer Lee.
Here.
Billy Malone.
He may be here, yeah.
Diane Marcusson.
Here.
Judy Matthews, yes, present. Justin Robinson.
Here.
Gloria Sanica.
Present.
Patricia Sutherland.
Here.
Dr. Sandra Thomas.
Excuse absence.
Sylvia Vega.
Present.
John White.
Present.
Dr. Reginald Wilkins.
Present.
Dorothy Wong.
Here.
We have a quorum at 14.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, that'll be 1.3 and that'll be approval of the meeting agenda for July 17, 2018. And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Sutherland.
Copies of the agenda are on the piano. Pick one up if you didn't on the way in. Councilmembers, there are a few changes. We, this agenda was approved by the Executive Committee on July the 10th, but if you make a note of just these very brief changes. Item number 3.2.4, in place of Hector Rodriguez, will be Ann Marie Hickembottom. And down on number seven, under Committee Reports, add 7.3, Education Committee, and 7.4, Safe Streets Mobility Committee. And then down under number nine, eliminate 9.14601. Are there any other adjustments or changes to be made? In that case, I move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Okay, there is a motion to accept the agenda as amended and properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Okay, Town Council members, that will be the order and the community, the order of the meeting for tonight, July 17. Okay, 2.1, that will be the Chairman's remarks. Okay, there's actually a lot of things. In the interest of time, I believe what I would do is I would just do a recap. First of all, to my fellow councilmembers, I would like to thank you for your support in 2017, 2018 council season. Your inputs throughout the year have been well received. We have implemented most of your recommendations, particularly as it relates to the agenda. It is not my desire to keep you beyond 10 o'clock, and I know on May, in May, we stayed a long, long time. So I did hear from a lot of the councilmembers that we should do whatever we can to make it short. We have made some changes, the Executive Committee. As we set the agenda, we try to time it, but we know that with all the great intentions, sometimes things do happen. So we also do have time-sensitive information that do come in after the agenda had been set. And also, we cannot control the community. A particular item on the agenda could governize the community to come out and speak. So it is our responsibility and our duty to allow the community to be heard. And I believe that was the same month that we had in La Vina, and the community came out. So we really did stay a long time. So again, I thank you for your understanding. I wanted to also give a little recap of what the council have achieved in the past year. One of those things is what we just witnessed. We opened it up to the community to be able to lead in the Pledge of Allegiance, and so far it has worked extremely well. And the community is participating, going along with your mission of progressive ideas and community engagement. So we believe that the community is well engaged. The other thing that I'd like to also mention is that several individuals have been recognized. I know that on Memorial Day, we recognize the, who we know to be the oldest veteran. So there's a lot of activities that we've been doing to engage the community. We have built a better relationship with law enforcement. We've always had a great relationship with the Altadena Sheriff's Station, but we've also added a good relationship with the Pasadena Police Department that came out of the Chris Blue situation. So again, I thank the community for your involvement. The community is doing very well. We also had a Christmas celebration, a holiday, annual holiday celebration, that was in an effort to also engage the community, have them meet and greet their representatives so that they can begin to get more comfortable. Your community, the, under the, I believe we give credit to Councilmember Matthews for the homeless count. I believe this is the second year that we've done it. Again, Councilmember Lee, we do appreciate what you're doing with the Education Committee, the Feminine Committee. The list goes on and on and on. We really do appreciate what you have done. So without really going to all that I've written down, I think what I would do is make it available so that we can post it on the website in the interest of time. Also, I would like to thank Supervisor for being present in our midst. Let's give her a round of applause. Okay, I think I'll just leave it that way and move on. That'll conclude my report and the rest, the remainder of what I have will go under the, will be in writing. Okay. So moving on to item number 2.1, and that will be the Vice Chair's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I will remind everyone that comment cards are on the piano. We do want to know what you have to say. This evening, you will have two opportunities to make public comment. If you would like to make a comment, please complete the card. Make sure that your name and address is legible and give it to the, one of the councilmembers at either end of the table. If you would like to have a response, because we do not answer public comment at the meeting itself, if you'd like a separate response from your councilperson, we will make sure that you get it, either after the meeting or after I give the comment card to the appropriate councilmember. The first time you'll have to make public comment is our general public comment section. It's a little later to, this evening, because we have a swearing-in of the newly-elected councilmembers and the voting on the new Executive Council. So then after the public safety reports, we'll have general public comment on anything that you'd like to speak on. The second opportunity you have for public comment is going to be down under Committee Reports. We do have a land use item that is going to need to be voted on, and if you have public comment on that item, please feel free to make it at that time. I think that's it. Yes, that is it for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And moving on to item number 2.3, that'll be Recording Secretary's Report and Councilmember Matthews.
Council, you were provided the proposed meeting minutes of June 19, 2018, with a response date of Monday, July 16, 2018. Are there any corrections or additions to the Not hearing any corrections or additions to the minutes, I move that the proposed meeting minutes of June 19, 2018 are approved.
Okay, you've heard the motion to approve the minutes, properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining? One abstention.
I was not there.
Item number 2.4, Treasurer's Report.
Thank you, Chair. Our fiscal year for the Altadena Town Council ends June 30. So I'd like to present our yearly financial statement, and I'll be very brief. The beginning balance, June 30, 2017, was $2,330. The balance, June 30, 2018, was 2,000, or is $2,544. During the year, we had income, including donations, we are run by donations, of $272, and election proceeds from candidates of $280. We had various expenses during the year, which included refreshments, election expenses, member badges, bank service charges, and website maintenance. In addition to this, we have a special recognition tonight. In recognition of Altadena Town Council's service, Census Tract 4301.01, Representative Judy Matthews has donated $100 for each year of her six service years, for a total of $600. The council thanks you deeply, as I assume does the community. The donation will be reflected in the July statement. As I mentioned, we are driven by donations, so in light of Judy's contribution, please dig deep.
Do the best that you can. Thank you. All right.
That concludes our remarks.
Thank you. Wonderful. You, we ended the year on a, on a big bang in our bank account.
Yes, if I understand correctly.
Item number 2.5, Correspondent Secretary's Report, Councilmember De La Torre.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In terms of correspondence, we have received no physical mail correspondence for the month, and for the website, we are still going along with that. And I would like to announce that we are beginning a historical report of the Altadena Town Council. Hopefully, we can get a picture and a brief memo or, you know, terms of service of previous members. That way, we don't forget the contributions they've made to our community, and that will be posted soon. Thank you.
Thank you so much. What I would like to do, if the council doesn't have a problem with that, I actually see one public comment that reminded me one item that I should have not skipped. I'd like to address it at this time, and that will be the Route 88, or the transit to the trails. I know that there's been a lot of individuals that have been communicating with the, with the county. Your town council is really on top of this. We wanted all the individuals and the entities that are involved to come out and address your questions, make a presentation. And we wanted a town, more like a town hall-style meeting, to where it is open and not so closed like this one, where time is an issue and interaction is not there. We were able to get all the parties to agree to come on the same day as the Land Use Committee, and that will be, I don't, anybody know what the first Tuesday in August is? I'm sorry?
On the 7.
On the 7. So on, on August 7, thank you so much, on August 7, the, we will have the regular Altadena Town Council Land Use Committee meeting, but it will be a town hall style so that all expressions and comments will be all entertained during that day. What we hope will happen is, after that, from the information, feedback, your comments, the, your town council will be able to, on the, the regular town council meeting, have an opinion, have a vote as to the direction of what is going to happen, or we hope to happen with respect to the Route 88. There are three possible outcomes. The first one will be, we just, the community decides that's not what they want. The other outcome will be, okay, continue what we have going on with modification. Then finally, it will be no modification, just, I'm sorry, the other one will be to totally kill the program, the Route 88, but we just don't know what is going to happen. Now, let me caution, even if your town council votes to continue with modification, that doesn't mean that the partners will agree to that. So, but we will represent your voice, ask your voice for the county and the community. I hope that's adequately addressed at this time, but still, I'll call the person who would like to speak at the appropriate time. Thank you so much, Council, for indulging me in that. I think that was very, very important, and we needed to address it at this point. Okay, moving on to the swearing-in ceremony of the newly-elected councilmembers. And again, I'm delighted, and I'd like to call up our Supervisor to come and do the honors.
Where do you want me?
That's fine.
I've been at board all day, so when you said aye, I actually agreed and said aye, because I'm used to, all day, so I feel like I'm part of this. Thank you very much. What an honor to be here. I know we've got a county employee, I was just told, in the audi, or on the town council, right? DHS? Department of Health Services?
DPH.
DPH, Public Health. Anyway, it is an honor to be here. I've got some proclamations and, to give to three special people. And actually, I'm going to start telling all the town councils that you pay to be on town council. Is that how it goes, Judy? I like that. I like that. I know, and I know that. I know that. But, but thank you very much for your generosity. When we talk about the town councils, I just wanted to say really quickly, having worked for Mike Antonovich for so long, the purpose of the town councils is to be the advisory group that understands what's going on in the community and that can provide input to the Supervisor. And Mike took that seriously, and I take it equally as, as seriously. You all are my eyes and ears. I have the great fortune of living in the area, so I run into a lot of these people, granny, when I'm out, out and about. So I hear directly from them, but I also recognize that you all, on a, you know, constant timetable, are aware of what is going on. So I want to personally thank you for helping me do my job, because without you, Altadena really would have a voice, but it would not be as powerful as each and every one of you that live in the community. So thank you very much. And with that, I have proclamations for Judy, for Nestor, and for John White. And I'd like to present these to you, and thank you for your service. So where do we, where do you want to do this? Up here? And now, I'm going to swear in the new members. So if you could stand up and get ready. It's John, Aaron, and Antonio, correct?
And all of you.
Oh, and all of you?
Yeah.
Wow.
No, no, just the people that got elected.
Okay.
Some of us are returned.
So let's, let's do it in a group so that we can, I can watch all of your mouths say "I do."
Go ahead.
All right. Well, okay, I'll do the new ones first to make them feel special, and then I'll do these. So you're standing, and now I would like you to raise your right hand, and please respond by saying "I do." Do you accept the position bestowed upon you by the voters of Altadena and pledge to faithfully execute all duties and responsibilities bestowed upon you on behalf of the community?
I do.
Do you pledge to uphold the Altadena Town Council's bylaws and ethical standards during your term in office?
I do.
Congratulations, you are now members of the Altadena Town Council. Thank you. And now, and now for you old timers.
Yeah.
Did you all say "I do"?
We didn't say it.
Okay, get over here.
Where do you want us?
Right in front. I want everyone to see. Everyone that's going to be sworn in. Okay, would you please raise your right hand? And please respond. You know what, it can hurt you to say it again. It's...
We have a delinquent.
Oh, we have a delinquent.
Come on.
Do you run your meetings like this? Okay. Would you please raise your right hand and respond by saying "I do"? Do you accept the position bestowed upon you by the voters of Altadena and pledge to faithfully execute all duties and responsibilities bestowed upon you on behalf of the community?
I agree.
Do you pledge to uphold the Altadena Town Council's bylaws and ethical standards during your term in office? Congratulations, you are again, once again, on the town council. Now go sit down. Thank you.
It's good to see you. You don't have me around.
And on Route 88, I really do want to hear all your input, so keep engaged in the community.
All right. Thank you so much. I know that against other recognitions, we can start with Congresswoman Judy Chu, and I believe Ms. Becky is here. Yeah, okay.
Good evening, Council. Obviously, the Congresswoman couldn't be here today, but she wanted to send me to come in person. Also, a summer intern that just started with our office, Annabelle Shu, wave your hand, Annabelle. She actually comes from Georgia, and we're happy to have her for the summer. So on behalf of the Congresswoman, I would like to recognize Councilmember Judy Matthews, John White, and Nestor Delatorre for your years of exemplary service. Yes, yes. Your commitment had really made the residents of the community better over the years. And, and then with Councilwoman Judy Matthews, was recognized at, in 2017, Congresswoman Chu's Congressional Woman of the Year. And I believe Councilman, Councilman De La Torre also had a working experience with our office as well. So I want to, yes, that's right. So thank you and congratulations. Shall I do it individually?
Yeah, okay.
Yes, please. Join me.
I think we'll just stay back here.
Oh, stay back here?
Okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please?
Please.
Oh, oh.
Not you.
You're not.
Yes, Senator Anthony Portantino's office, and that'll be Mr. Corey.
So thank you for having me. My name is Dominic Corey, and I'm here on behalf of State Senator Anthony Portantino. And I have to say, it's been a pleasure to work with you three, doing things in the community. Don't leave our community. I know you guys are busy people, but make sure you guys stay involved. So on behalf of the California State Senate, I join the Altadena Town Council- So, on behalf of the California State Senate, I join the Altadena Town Council, and thank you for your outstanding contributions during your tenure as councilmembers, including your service on the Executive Committee. Our community has grown and flourished under your leadership. Your commitment to enhance the quality of life for the residents of Altadena is truly appreciated. So just thank you, thank you, thank you, and look forward to working with you guys in the future. And to the new board members, congratulations, glad to work with you guys, so thank you.
Okay, stay where you are, we're not done. Next would be Assemblymember Chris Holden's office, and Ann Ichabodri.
Thank you.
Will do the presentation.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the community and the Altadena Town Council. Again, on behalf of Assemblymember Chris Holden, we add our commendation and thanks and recognition to these volunteers who gave their time and effort over the years to help advance the issues of concern to the, to the greater community. It's extremely important. We would also like to point out, on behalf of Chris Holden, Judy Matthews' particular assistance to him in drafting a bill proposal that would address the issues of food insecurity among families and students of community colleges. He was very grateful and impressed with your input. And so, on behalf of Member Holden, to Judy Chu, Judy Chu, excuse me, Judy Matthews, Nestor De La Torre. You can take that back to Judy Chu. But do tell her I said "thank you" for her service as well. And John White, and just to highlight through the certificates, recognizes your valuable service as an outgoing member of the Altadena Town Council. The Altadena Town Council serves an important function by giving the community a meaningful voice at the county level on important public policy issues, including land use, public safety, and transportation. Congratulations, and best wishes on your future endeavors. Matthews?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. On very captain, Captain Stocky. Oh, more, more, more. We're not done.
Oh, more?
Two more.
All right, I just want to thank you on behalf of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and Altadena Station in particular. I'd like to thank you guys all for your volunteerism and your dedication, and we have a certificate of appreciation on behalf of Altadena Sheriff's Station. So, Mr. White, Ms. Judy Matthews, and Nestor De La Torre. So congratulations.
Okay, while you're there, I didn't want to bring my computer there, but I wanted to share with the community some of the things that these council members have done. And I'll start with Councilmember John E. White. Councilmember John White joined the Altadena Town Council in August of 2014 to fill a vacant seat in Census Tract 4601. He served four years as a member of the Altadena Town Council Land Use Committee, one year as a member of the Executive Committee as the treasurer. Councilmember White was active, interactive, and visible in the community. His efforts produced numerous safety improvements to Altadena residents, including increased traffic enforcement, new street signs, and new traffic pattern that dramatically improved both safety and conjections. He attended most public events in Altadena and beyond. Councilmember White designed and sourced the current Altadena Town Council NEM badge, which, what we're wearing. He leaves the town council with sustained interest in the community and looks forward to the future that is being crafted under the current leadership. So again, I will get that to you in a minute. So we want to congratulate you, and thank you for your years of service to the, to your town council and to the community. Just give me a second. Okay, Councilmember De La Torre, Nestor De La Torre. Councilmember De La Torre joined the Altadena Town Council in July of 2016. He served two years as a member of the Altadena Town Council Land Use Committee, one year as a member of the Altadena Executive Committee as Correspondent Secretary. Councilmember De La Torre is active, interactive, and visible in the community. He attended most meetings outside of the council. Councilmember De La Torre is the chair of the AdHoc Website Committee, and he is credited for revamping and maintaining the Altadena Town Council website, for which we are very grateful. He has knocked on hundreds of doors to engage the community on upcoming items affecting the community. Again, thank you so much for your dedication and sacrifice for the community. Councilmember Judy Matthews, a long history, so I did cut out some of the things. Councilmember Matthews joined the town council in 2012, so she's served six years as a member of the Altadena Town Council Land Use Committee, one year on the Executive Committee as the Recording Secretary. Councilmember Matthews, very active, as you'll see in a minute. She established a community partnership with local businesses, schools, organizations, and organizations. This collaborative effort engaged residents in reporting illegal dumping and abandoned waste. She increased constituents' engagement in community concerns. The fire situation with the Meadows Fire Prevention Society, she also spearheaded that. As already mentioned, she, on the council, the representative, or a member of the, Assemblymember Chris Holden, California House of Rep. 41st District Local Government Advisory Committee. She's a member of the AdHoc Committee, the Lavinia Subcommittee, that negotiated, I believe, six-acre Owen Brown site for public benefit and preservation. Councilmember, Councilmember Matthews is credited for many ATC initiatives included, but not limited to the Altadena Homeless Count. So, it's just a lot of things. I'm just going to cut, I say, thank you so much for all that you have done for this community. So let's give them a round of applause. On behalf of the Altadena Town Council, I'd like to present you a recognition certificate. Let's give them a round of applause. Now, now they can leave. Okay, I know. And again, I thank the, the elected officials that came, and your always participation in, and concern and interest in Altadena that you represent. So, we're going to give you a round of applause for making all that effort. Okay, at this, at this time, I would like to invite the, the council members, the new council members to...
Wait, to the next slate?
Okay, so let's, let's change over there.
We have to vote on land use side of it? And it would be better to have this council, who's done the evaluation of the project? So, if you want to bring them on after that vote, or if you want to do that, move that up on the agenda, but I would, I think the point of order is to have the people who are on the council that approved it in land use.
Thank you so much, I know where we're going. Okay, we have to make a change to the order of the, of the meeting because of a pending vote on a land use item, so the, is, the present council members are the only ones that can vote on that, because you guys have not had the opportunity to participate. So, okay, so let's move on with the land use matter.
Okay.
And is that okay with all members? Councilmembers? Okay. Councilmember Markerson?
Okay, thank you. First, a quick little announcement that only six people have registered their fences since we got the county to give us special handling of those fences. So if you have a non-conforming fence or hedge in your front yard, please contact the county to, they've sent out a number of notices, and they're looking to come to our meeting, town council meeting this summer. But I really would encourage everybody to do it, the end of it will be the end of March, I believe. So, please register, there was such a outpouring of concern about fences and hedges when we were actually going through the CSD process, and the county came up with a special process for us by which you can have a, sort of a, you know, special dispensation for 15 years on your non-conforming fences and hedges. There is a process in place to report those to the county and register, and if anybody complains about your fence and hedge, fence and/or hedge and wall, in, in those 15 years, the county will not enforce the out-of-compliance condition. So, I really, the county has gone out of their way to, to do a special thing for Altadena because there was so much upset at the time of the CSD. So I encourage everybody to sign up, we're up to six people who have done it. And now, we'll move on. We reviewed an item at the last land use committee. Daniel Harlow will present the information to us, and then we can vote. We'll have public comment first, and then we'll vote.
Can everybody hear me okay? So, as Diane said, my name's Daniel Harlow, I serve on the land use committee on behalf of Jennifer for Census Tract 4612. We have a CUP from Verizon Wireless for the continued operation and installation of a new generator at 1901 Allen. So, as part of the process, we, I went out and walked all 80-plus homes on June 30th, flyered them, and talked to homeowners that were available. We actually, I only got to speak to 10 people who were home, eight of which were in support, two had concerns about the health impact of wireless. I did let them know that the wireless station that is currently there is not being changed in this configuration, and has been there for over 10 years at this point. In addition to the outreach via walking, I also did next-door posts, other social media posts, and I made a special effort to contact the neighbors who were immediately next to the property because of the position of the generator, where it's going to be on the 1901, to get their input on that. So, the feedback from the immediate neighbors was they wanted restrictions on when the construction was to be done, to Monday through Friday of 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., along with generating, generator testing to be done during business hours, too, based on their experience with previous installs that had gone on at that site. In addition, a next-door neighbor, and I had already talked to the Verizon rep at the time, wanted to make sure that the generator met all earthquake, noise, and pollution laws. It is a carbon compliant generator, it's a DC generator, it's one of the quietest they could buy, because it is directly next to somebody's garage. So, we present that information, which almost a good portion of the council is also on the land use, and at the July 3rd land use meeting, the land use committee voted to recommend approval of the CUP, that the town council recommended approval of the CUP with those three conditions. I have already talked to Verizon about all those conditions, and they agreed to them, no, no problem. So, our hope is tonight, the full town council can vote on it here, and we can get approval and move them on their way, because, as I'm sure we all experienced just last weekend, we could have used the emergency generator.
Yeah, that's right.
So, are there any questions? So, I know we have a bunch of the land use, so I think we...
Okay, do you have the motion, Daniel, that we did?
I do, but I didn't print it out.
Okay.
So...
For the motion, can he pass it on to the council member for a motion?
Yeah, sure, but we, but we don't have the motion, that's what, I was asking if he had the motion.
Oh, okay.
Like, the wording, sorry, the wording of the motion.
Yeah, I have the wording here.
Okay, just, yeah, just read it, that's fine.
Yeah, it was that the...
Well, yeah, can we, I'll make the motion, I'll, I make a motion of what Daniel's going to read.
Okay.
So that we recommend to the county that, for the approval of the CUP, it is 2018-001418, project number 2018-001303, for the continued operation of the wireless station and install of the generator at 1901 Allen, with the following conditions: Work on installs to be done during business hours, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Generators to meet all California air pollution, noise, and earthquake building laws, and all generator testing is to be scheduled during business hours from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday.
Okay, you've heard the motion that was made by Councilmember Markerson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Wong. Okay, any discussions? Any public comments?
No.
Okay, no discussions on, on behalf of the council, and no public comments with respect to that, so are you all ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining?
Abstaining.
One abstention? Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Daniel.
All right, so we will now move back to the, to the slate, and I will be calling on Councilmember...
Now we need to excuse the old councilperson.
Yes, okay. So, thank you so much, and if you want to take a, we're going to do a little swap. Three, four, three. We are very efficient, so they got their, their nameplates, and then the NEM badge. Okay. All right. Okay. Uh, just a little protocol and we'll be ready in a minute. Okay, we are all set and, um, uh, the slate committee, um, council member Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, colleagues. Um, in accordance with the bylaws, uh, as the, uh, the slate committee, uh, that was me, that was our friends Judy and Nestor, who are now resting comfortably in the audience. We sent out an email to everyone who was, uh, all the sitting council members at the time, uh, four weeks ago, asking for interest in serving as an officer from those who were eligible. That's those folks who had already served 12, the last 12 consecutive months on the council, uh, as well as for nominations, suggestions for who they thought might make good officers and why. We, the committee, then followed up, uh, with those folks who had been nominated to gauge their interest. And as a result, we have a complete slate for you. And if there's no new nominations from the floor, um, this slate can just be accepted by acclamation. There doesn't have to be a formal vote. Uh, and if you like, I'll read that slate to, uh, for the benefit of the council and the public.
Proceed, please.
All right. Chair Okori Iziyeme, Vice Chair Pat Sutherland, Corresponding Secretary Dorothy Wong, Recording Secretary Veronica Jones, and Treasurer Jennifer Lee.
Okay, um, any nominations from the floor? From council? Okay, um, eh, we are done. We closed the nomination period and, uh, the slate is the, um, will be your officers for 2018, 2019, and that will be, can you read it again?
Chair Okori Iziyeme, Vice Chair Pat Sutherland, Corresponding Secretary Dorothy Wong, Recording Secretary Veronica Jones, and Treasurer Jennifer Lee.
Okay. All right, thank you so much, and, uh, your assignment and your job is done for the committee. All right.
You gonna crack the minutes for the rest of the meeting? I mean, she's gonna make the minutes at the beginning, so now she's gonna finish?
Yes, she will finish.
Then we'll get together and put them together.
Yeah, okay. All right, uh- Public safety, uh, 5.1, uh, is Officer Mike here? Oh, no. Officer- Yoywa, okay. Yoywa.
Good evening, everybody. Officer Mike with Altadena CHP office. Uh, thanks for having me. Over the past couple of months, I've been gone on training, so it's good to be back and, uh, back to the business of, uh, making things safer in Altadena. Uh, the stats for the month of June, uh, 2018 consisted of the following. There was a total of 22 traffic collisions. Um, to be quite honest, that was kind of a nice reduction in traffic collisions because in months past, we had been upwards of 30 traffic collisions or more. Of those traffic collisions, 10 were property damage only. Uh, there were four hit-and-run traffic collisions. Two of those were just simple, um, uh, traffic collisions in which somebody was parked on the street, somebody was backing out of their driveway, and a collision occurred. They were pretty minor. Eight, I'm sorry, six of those traffic collisions, uh, involved injury, ranging from, uh, minor to, uh, moderate injury. Um, there was one collision involving a bicyclist. The bicyclist sustained moderate injury. Dot, I knew that would be of interest to you. He refused to be transported, but he did have some pretty good bumps and bruises. Um, there were two traffic collisions, uh, that were DUI-related. Um, the subsequent investigation, uh, obviously resulted in arrest. Uh, one of those drivers in that particular traffic collision, uh, sustained severe injuries. So, don't drink and drive. Uh, there was one other DUI arrest, and that was just a simple, um, infraction where an officer observed either speeding or, uh, cellphone use. That driver was stopped and, uh, they were under the influence, so they were subsequently arrested. Uh, there were zero fatalities, so that was good. Uh, on the enforcement side of things, citations, um, throughout the month of June, there was , uh, 39 total traffic, uh, citations issued. Uh, anyone care to guess on the, the leading cause? Elliot? Elliot? No? Close. Stop signs. Stop signs. Many of the collisions that we have in the Altadena area are right-of-way collisions. You know, two, two people get to an intersection and it's like, well, who goes first? You know? And you have a collision, you know? Just be patient. It's like when I was a little kid, and you know, what do you do when you walk across the street? Look left, look right, look left again, you know? Same rules applies to driving. Um, has anybody ever heard of SWITRS?
SWITRS?
SWITRS. S-W-I-T-R-S. It's the statewide integrated traffic record system. So, if there's a traffic collision in and around the area and you have a question about it, you can go to this website, create a profile, and you, you can, uh, log into your profile and you can look up, uh, information regarding the, the traffic collision that may have happened in and around your community. It doesn't give you specifics like people's names and dates of birth or driver's license, but it'll give you a, a general description of what took place, um, with that particular traffic collision. When our officers go out into the, the field, we have what we call our line beats. Uh, you guys always refer to census tracts. Everybody is responsible for a particular census tract. I met with, uh, Dorothy this past Thursday, and we were trying to narrow down, you know, where we could find problematic areas, because as I've come to you in the past, you know, I've always told you that, um, traffic collisions in and around the Altadena, uh, tend to be kind of sporadic in locations. So, our officers are given what are called line beats, and those line beats are pretty much the major thoroughfares in and around the Altadena area. So, hopefully this helps, Dot. But on Altadena Drive for the month of June, there were two traffic collisions. On Allen Avenue, there were zero. On Lake, there was one. Uh, New York, there was three. Fair Oaks, there was three. Uh, Lincoln, there was one, and on Marengo, there was one. So, hopefully that kind of narrows down, you know, um, or give you an idea of where these traffic collisions are, are happening. They're not in just one particular area. If I didn't mention any of the other streets, that's because they're not a line beat and it's not a major thoroughfare or anything like that. Could be like Palm or some, one of the smaller residential streets. And that concludes my report. Ladies and gentlemen.
Questions from council for, okay, uh, council member Wong?
Just, uh, so Woodbury was not, uh, on the list for this one at all? Woodbury?
You got me on that one, Dot. Um, Woodbury was one of them. I'm sorry, uh, there was two.
Okay, thank you.
There was two. And, um, if there's any other questions? One second. Um, with me tonight is Officer Stephanie Norton. From time to time, she's going to be, uh, my replacement here. She's only slightly bladder to look at than me, you know? But, uh, you know, she's gonna help me out from time to time, so, um, wave hi, Stephanie. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Altadena Sheriff's Station, Captain Stocky?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of Altadena Town Council. Um, before we review the crime stats, I'd like to share with you some important information with everyone. Um, the 4th of July, we handled numerous firework-related calls for service. There are no fires or injuries related to any of the firework calls for service. Just a reminder that there are family events going on, um, throughout the, uh, summer months at Parks After Dark at Loma Alta Park. There are lots of individual and family events that are scheduled, um, during the summer. So, families, if you have, uh, activities that you'd like to attend, um, please check out Loma Alta Park and their Parks After Dark. Also, again, this year, Altadena Station will host National Night Out on August 7th, 2018, at Farnsworth Park, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Um, I don't have any flyers tonight, but once I receive a flyer, I'll send it so they can post it on the, the website. Um, that's all regarding the, eh, events that we're, uh, hosting. Overall crime for the month of June, when compared to the month of May, went from 48 to 41. We're down by seven crime incidents. Armed robberies, we had, uh, one, when, and we had one strong-arm robbery. Aggravated assaults, we have four last month and also four this month. One of those, uh, incident is possibly gang-related and it, the investigation is, um, active. Um, domestic violence remained at two. Residential burglaries, thank goodness, went down from seven to four. I'd like to see that at zero every month. Other, uh, burglary structures, uh, also decreased from four to one. Larceny, grand theft, and petty theft, uh, from 15 to 17. And those are, again, the ones that I always talk about, um, locking up and removing items from your car. Uh, our GTA's were also down, uh, last month, from 11 to five. We had two Honda Accords, uh, one Toyota Pickup that had gardening equipment, a Jaguar and a, uh, 2006 Chevy vehicle. Our arson's remained at zero. Our overall narcotic arrests were up from one to five, and overall, we're down by seven crime incidents compared to last month. Uh, census tract four, six, zero, one, four, six, zero, two, each had an increase of three, uh, crime incidents from last month, and census tract four, six, zero, three, dot, two, had the largest decrease from 11 to two incidents from last month. Just a reminder, um, if you see something, say something in your neighborhood. You live in your neighborhood, you know who does or does not belong, uh, please give us a call, and, and as I always ask you to do, is remove all, um, valuables from your vehicle before you park your vehicle. And that concludes my report. Does anyone have any questions?
Sylvia.
Sylvia, okay. Okay, council member, uh, Markerson?
Hi. Um, not so much of a question as an encouragement for people to go to, um, night, the, the National Night Out event, which is a really great event and fun to, um, fun to go, but also fun to be with the, get to know your local deputies. Um, it's the land use night, when we're gonna do the bus route, 88. So, I encourage, what I think I try to do usually is go to the National Night Out first and then come here. Um, we may have some actual, uh, business to do before we do the public comment, so, and we'll try to leave public comment out while we're here for the whole meeting and we'll try to get everybody in, but I, you can do both. So, um, I just encourage everybody to do both.
And National Night Out is a family event, and we will, uh, have hamburgers and hotdogs and maybe some popcorn. So, we'll fill you up and then you can come to land use. But bring your family out, bring the kids out, um, so they can meet all your local law enforcement officers.
Do we have a dunk tank?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay. Not this year, okay?
No.
No dunking in the captain's-
Not while I'm the captain, there will not be a dunk tank.
Doki-doki. Good to know. All right. That's all, thanks. Thanks very much for all you do. Okay, are there any other questions, sir?
Uh, no other questions. Thank you so much, uh, Captain Stocky.
All right, thank you, guys. Have a nice month.
All right. All right, county fire? Okay. Oh. Ms. Kraken is back.
Hello, everyone. Uh, okay, activity in Altadena for the month of June. Uh, there were a total of 324 responses. Uh, 274 of those were for medical calls, um, with 195 of those patients having been transported. Um, you will notice, finally, one time, um, the patient seen total is one higher than the incident total. So, in the table, there were 274 incidents, but 275 patients. So, that will happen, uh, if there's ever more than one patient at an incident. So, it could've been a traffic collision or something with two, two patients. Fires. We had three trash fires, uh, and two vehicle fires for the month. So, we had a total of five fires. Uh, we had some power lines down and some wires down, uh, and a gas spill with no damages on Woodbury Road. And then we had the 15 traffic collision locations, which are noted for you. Um, the, again, the street, the first street is the street that the collision occurred on, and the second street is the closest cross street, so it didn't necessarily occur in the intersection. Uh, and then we participated in the Touch a Truck event at the Altadena Library in June. Any questions?
Just one. The two trash fires on Pine Crest. How close are those to the trailhead?
Uh, don't know. They just come up with that, you know, that address is a very common address, uh, up into, uh, Upper Eaton.
Both of them at the same address?
Yeah, they come up as the same address. So, they, they're probably in close proximity, but I couldn't tell you exactly where.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions from council? Okay, thank you so much, and good to see you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to general public comments.
Got someone timing?
Well, he usually times it, so let Mitch try.
Can you do it?
Okay, uh, you have, uh, two minutes.
Julia Tillman? I think that's correct. This comes in, in the form more of a question. Uh, you say, you know, to, um, if you see something reported, if something's suspicious, and a couple of weeks ago, I saw something suspicious in my neighborhood. My name is Julia Tillman. I live up on Maiden Lane in Altadena, and my husband and I were working in, uh, the trash, and we saw a young man. First, he sat across the street at the house, and he had a backpack on, and he didn't belong in our neighborhood. So, we watched him. He moved from there after he sat there for about five minutes, and he moved across the street, uh, down the street a bit. We still watched him, and he sat there, and then he went into this, uh, elderly gentleman's home, who I knew he wasn't home. And I, my husband said, "Okay, well, it's time to call the sheriff. This looks suspicious." The guy had a, uh, a backpack on. He was a young man with a backpack. So, I called the sheriff's team. My, my question is, I felt like I was being interrogated. You know, when I call, I, I get that I have to say, "My name's Julia Tillman. I live at so-and-so-and-so-and-so, Maiden Lane. I saw this." You say, "Report suspicious." They went on to ask question after question. I'm saying, "Stop asking me all of these questions. Come, the guy went up in this man's yard. The man's not home. I went across the street, saw the gate open. I said, 'His gate is never open,' and the guy never came out. I said, 'He's gonna come out before, uh, you, you send somebody and you're asking me all these questions.'" Well, we don't want to, uh, the officers would have to ask you the questions when they get there. Well, let them ask me the questions. I'm standing out here watching. So, my question is, how many questions are they gonna ask you before they send out someone to respond? And I'm not taking away from what the sheriffs do or anything. I respect them highly. I have a lot of sheriff friends and all of that, but, um, that, that was my question. It was just a great concern, and I was, I was frustrated because I was answering all these questions. Well, what is this? And what is that? And what is this? I told you my name, I told you my address, I told you the, uh, the address next door to where I saw the young man go in. And that, that's my question. That's my concern and complaint or whatever.
Thank you so much. And, uh-
The captain is in, in the back of the room, and I'm quite sure that she'll talk with you.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Rodolfo Matut, Matuti? No? Okay. Becky Chang? Decided to stay around- Decided to stay around a little bit?
Thank you. Becky Chang, again, with Congressman Judy Cho's office. I just wanted to share with the council and also the Altadena community that we are working with a local nonprofit agency called the Asian American Economic Development Enterprise. They're based out in Monterey Park. But every year in the city of Alhambra, they put together a job fair. And it's always very well-attended, always more than 100 vendors, meaning employers, looking to hire. And there's a lot of services they provide. You can bring your resume, and they will help you critique free of charge. Nothing's charged, you know, nothing costs anything for the public. So I want to share with that. I have copies of the flyer in the back, and I would be more than happy to share electronic copy with the council, just so you guys could spread it around. Yeah.
Yes, and you'll give it to us, too, so we can send it out to our residents.
Okay. Wonderful. I will do that. And another quick comment is that Shannon Lewis, who was our former representative for the city of Altadena area, she's no longer with us. So I'm trying, trying to staff up again so you would have direct contact with the office. But in the meantime, you know where to find us. I'm always in the office, in the district office, so you can also reach me. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience and waiting.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies of the Altadena Council. Thanks for having me. My name is Jane Wong. I live in Altadena, next door to Jackson Elementary School, located on 59 West Woodbury Road. I'm representing part of the community of neighbors who have grievances about the recent construction happening at the school. So none of us knew what was going on at the schoolyard. We all knew that there was some construction going on because all the large machinery was waking us up, making lots of noises on some mornings at 6:00 AM, working until very late at night, some days past 8:00 PM, and on Sundays as well. We had to officially call in to complain about the noise, and we know that this was illegal and not within the noise regulation laws of the city. I wonder if Pasadena Unified School District even knew that their contractors were breaking these kinds of laws. That's when I reached out to city council and spoke with Akori, and I spoke with Veronica Jones. Veronica has since been wonderful and helped me get the information to reach out to Nelson, the chief of facilities in the Pasadena Unified School District. I wrote a letter representing our community, which I sent yesterday. Thankfully, with some very proactive and resourceful neighbors, some here representing, we actually were able to find out that the school was building a parking lot, a drive-in and drop-off for parents, and additional bungalows within the school. And this was after many efforts of trying to reach out to the principal of the school and not getting a whole lot of information. So we, you can understand, our community was pretty frustrated. We know that with the influx of new students that are coming into the school, this is the school's response to address some of the changes that are happening. However, the increase of the students that have, that will be intending have, you know, severe consequences in our community. You know, even though they're doing these drop-in, drop-offs, there's still going to be traffic congestion. We still have issues of illegal parking in our neighborhood. And there's also safety concerns for the kids. We actually don't even know if the school's done any traffic assessments about the traffic going in our neighborhood. And also, another really unfortunate thing is that they're cutting into the school playground to create a parking lot. So not only are they bringing in more students into the school, there's less play areas for them. It would have been nice for them to have reached out to the community of residents surrounding the school, to have voiced the work that they've been doing. We didn't get any public notice. There's an insufficient amount of safety signs. People speeding down our street casitas, it's super dangerous. Tons of blind spots, a lot of cars parked along the street. And we need a four-way stop. We need more children crossing signs and crosswalks. And one of our neighbors also suggested, "Do we possibly change the Street Crosby to a one-way so that it can maybe alleviate some of the concerns of the traffic congestion?" We heard that the school is also going to be taking down some of the fence work between casitas and Crosby, and we have huge issues with this. The parking lot is going to draw unwanted congregation points where we already have issues with people drinking, smoking, doing drugs, making noise at night, and there is not enough light to deter these folks from entering. Even worse, my property is only separated by a chain-link fence that people can look right into my living quarters.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, what you...
May I say that Veronica, you were already in touch with her on this, right? So I think that Veronica can follow up with you, along with a combination of Dot and Jennifer.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Can I just...
Thank you, thank you for letting us.
Yeah.
Okay.
When you contacted me, I was able also to reach out to Pasadena Unified School District. So when they told me that Councilmember Jones was already on it, there wasn't any reason to duplicate the effort. You do have some valid concerns. And I know that there is a PUSD board meeting. Information such as this will be very, very plausible for them, so... But again, I'm not going to get in the middle of it. So since Councilmember Jones is already there, I strongly recommend that you collaborate. I know that something will happen because she's involved. All right?
So just the next steps, then, just to make sure to reach out to Veronica and get more information?
And I'll be in touch. And not only that, our Safe Streets Committee, we're already addressing a lot of those concerns that you have.
And may I also add, this is, I look at it, it involves different, more than one committee. This is an education committee matter, because that's to deal with Pasadena Unified School District, as well as the well-being, safety of the community, which will, can be better addressed by the council members. So you'll be collaborative. So again, thank you for bringing that to attention, and we will get on it.
Is it possible for me to at least conclude with the summary of objectives that I was hoping to accomplish?
It will be handled by your council member.
All right. So we'll be on...
We'll have you at our committee. You'll get to conclude later.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Just a reminder, it's two minutes, please.
Thank you. I'll take one and a half. I'll be good. Mr. Chairman, council members, thank you so much. I am Richardson Honoray, the lead pastor of the Altadena Seventh Adventist Church between Ventura and Mountainside. Currently, I'm also on order serving my country at Edwards Air Force Base as an officer. So thank you. I'll be very brief and share some initiative that we are doing at our church that may impact the community. And I want to thank Veronica Jones, my councilwoman, just for your support and collaboration for making this possible. And so the first one is in July 20, next Sunday, we'll be having a classic car show for the community, in which we'll be bringing out jumpers, games, food, and everything, all over from Los Angeles County. And we'll be having the most beautiful cars come out on display, and one of them will win. If you have a car, come on down and come and try to win. So we'll be doing that in July. In August, we'll be having our initiative with the Red Cross, in which we'll be going from home to home. The Saving Lives Initiative, in which checking our citizens, making sure that fire detectors are working, and they are saving thousands of life just doing that. So we will be collaborating with them, going from doors to doors, doing that. We'll also be having a job fair in August, in which we bring in various organizations to the city right on-site, in which actually they'll be doing interviewing and hiring right on-site on properties. So it's going to be a major initiative. And finally, in September, we'll be having a health fair. We usually have about maybe a couple of thousands that comes out. We have dental. We have physicians on-site. We have massage therapy. We have physical therapy. We have counseling. We have, I mean, all kinds of professionals and instrument that will be on-site, providing free health services, a clinic for the entire day for the citizens in our cities. We'll also have the Red Cross upstairs giving blood and all that. And so there's a ton of initiative, we believe, that will greatly benefit our city greatly. So we just want to shed a word and spread the love. And once again, thank you, my councilwoman. And I'm a preacher, and I was under two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You will let us know the dates? Somebody know the dates? I know you just said in August, we don't...
And all that.
Okay. All right, thank you so...
Because his kid's here tonight. Let the flags loop.
Perfect. Okay.
From his church.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers. I just wanted to give you an update on some upcoming dates of voter registration training. For those of you who want to find people that would like to go out and register voters in the community, it's a fairly simple thing to do, but there are a couple of little tricks about it that people need to know when they register, because their ballot can be invalidated if there are a couple of things they don't do correctly. So there are going to be four trainings. Neighbors Building a Better Altadena got them organized. The library is gracious enough to provide the space for the trainings. The first one is this coming week, on Tuesday, July 24th, at the Bob Lucas Branch at 6:00. The next one is August 4th at the main branch at 10:00 in the morning. The next one is on August the 11th, also at the main branch at 1:00 in the afternoon. And the fourth one is on August the 21st at the Bob Lucas Branch, starting at 6:00. We will be getting flyer, we're a little behind, so we will be getting a flyer out, and we will send that to you electronically, so you can share it with your Census Track folks and anybody else that would like to take the training. There will, there is a space constraint in a couple of the rooms, so we do need to get a reservation back. But it's free. Martha Zavala, who is the Voter Services Chairperson for the League of Women Voters Pasadena Area, is going to run all four of the trainings. So it's a wonderful opportunity for a little civic engagement. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Marge Nichols?
Hello, councilmembers and audience members. I'd like to talk about a new campaign that Neighbors Building a Better Altadena is running to organize the community to get out and vote at the library, the library election. The library election is the only election where Altadena has a direct vote. So we feel that there are a lot of people who do not understand the process about the library board election. And so we're going to be doing an awareness campaign. First of all, that the filing period for running for the library board is July 16th through August 10th. You must file, obviously, with the registrar of voters to run for the library board. Second, that the community is going to be getting more information about the election on social media. We hope to have signs that will make people more aware of the library election that's coming up. We were going to be having a candidate forum on October 3rd for all of the candidates for, who have filed for the library board. And this will be conducted by League of Women Voters. None of the League of Women Voters people will be residents of Altadena, so they'll be impartial. And we will then follow that up with a Get Out the Vote campaign and focus on making it to the end of the ballot. The local elections are at the very, very end of the ballot, and you have to persevere to get all the way down there and vote for four separate people. Now, we noticed that the Altadena Town Council Treasury is in very good shape, and we may want to, you may want to participate in printing some signs. This is a completely nonpartisan effort, but we want to get the community to understand that our wonderful Altadena Library, the only local organization that we elect, is going to be having this election, what it entails, and above all, make it to the end of the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Marge.
Just, Marge? The, there's an event, League of Women Voters on the 5th. Is that...
That's just general community training to register voters.
Okay. No, I was referring to the one at the Western Justice Center.
That's a League of Women Voters event, a fundraiser and friend-rouser, and it's been wonderful to have so many elected officials attend also, so that people can talk with them.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Well, good evening again. First, I wanted to let you know that this has been my fourth time here. I think I didn't speak on the time where you were running over to almost 11:00 o'clock on the meeting, so... But I'm the face of the Keep Altadena Beautiful Committee, which is a group of over, well over 100 neighbors who are in opposition to Route 88, as you know. So I wanted to pick up on my last sentence, when I exceeded by several minutes, my two minutes. And at that time, I wanted to make you aware about the media that was coming. So by way of update, just that, since the last meeting, there has been print coverage. The San Gabriel Valley Tribune came out with an article that I hope many of you have seen. Also, there was a CBS Channel 2 news coverage, and both of those, both of those are on link at our website at keepaltadinabeautiful.com. We have a diverse group of neighbors, and particularly the CBS story focused on that. The second thing I wanted to focus on is that there is misleading data that is being put out about the Route 88 averaging 600-plus on the weekend. Well, the short line on that is that Route 88 is picking up the riders from Route 260, which has historically gone down Fair Oaks and the Fair Oaks Corridor. So in short, Route 88 is picking up half of the ridership that would normally ride 260. Drivers are encouraging people to get onto the bus if they know they are getting on or off along the corridor that they service on Fair Oaks. So it is somewhat misleading, not somewhat misleading, but misleading to represent that there are 600-plus riders on Route 88, and to even imply that that number is going to the trailhead, as we see week after week, don't we, that the buses are empty at the trailhead. So our data is driven by our going and riding the bus. And then the final thing, you took care of my two concerns about when the meeting would be. Thank you very much, and we're looking forward to turning out our neighbors to be able to hear that discussion.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's all the public comment.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, moving on to the committee reports. We've already heard the land use, and we took action, and now the film, filming committee. Dr. Common?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, councilmembers and community members. I haven't given a filming committee report at an ATC... I haven't given a filming committee report at an ATC meeting in a while, but that doesn't mean we haven't been meeting. We've been meeting at least once a month. The committee members are Pat Sutherland, Victoria Knapp, both town council members, and Kenny Meyer, a member of the community, and myself. You know that we have submitted an FAQ on location filming that's up on the ATC website and we sent out that FAQ to county agencies and we got feedback from at least two county agencies. And what we've been doing is following up on that feedback, getting clarification on some of the issues, getting clarification on how the ordinances and policies are interpreted by these county agencies. At our last meeting, we had two other community members attend and I would like to invite other members of the community, anybody who would like to attend, please do so. Our meetings take place the Wednesday after the first Tuesday of the month, so that's not always the first Wednesday of the month, and they take place here in this room at 1:30 PM. And if anyone is thinking of coming, it would be good to let the committee know at altadinafilmingcommittee.org in advance so that if the time changes or the venue changes, we can let you know. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the 7.3, right? Education Committee, okay. Councilmember Lee.
Am I up?
Yes.
Education Committee Report. As you know, we have a biannual town hall. Our next is September 26th at 6:00 in the evening in this room. It's three hours long, we will have a large panel. And this is a draft, so I'm not passing this out, but the theme for this town hall is integration in our public schools. This is for the PUSD schools. And we'll be discussing a lot of interesting things. We have a couple of principals, we have PUSD arts coordinators, some parents, and some other administration. So I, just making the announcement, I will make it again in August.
Thank you. All right, item number eight. So we have a 7.4, Safe Street Mobility, that'll be Councilmember Wong, right?
Yes, hello, everybody, thank you very much. So just to introduce the committee again, this is Altadena Safe Streets and the Safe Streets Committee is, goal is to advocate for safe, inclusive, and healthy streets for all users regardless of mode and ability, informing and educating Altadena community members, collecting data, synthesizing that data, collaboration with our government and community organizations and our community members to proactively propose solutions to transportation, safety, and mobility problems. The Altadena Safe Streets Committee meets the first Thursday of each month and so our next meeting will be August 2nd, 6:00. We decided we want to get out earlier, so it'll be 6:00 to 7:30. So just a quick highlight, to, I'm sorry, April, we had a town hall where we started sort of visioning and hearing people's concerns and what they, what they were concerned most about. May, we went through Community Organizing, our committee, so that we could be working efficiently in that timeframe. We also, let's see, we also kind of went through and prioritized safe routes to schools and also mapping. So from that, we went into our July meeting. Each time, we've had about 20 to 30 residents and community members and committee members come. So we just had our last meeting July 12th because of the Fourth of July holiday and that was really productive. We have since been awarded a CalWALKS grant, which is going to be focusing on safe routes to schools. I'm going to let Veronica talk about that. And then we also have been awarded a Go Human Active Transportation Grant that has to go through the library. We're trying to host it at the Bob Lucas Library, focusing on pedestrian and traffic safety. And we're also going to really help people understand what safe routes to schools are. And so Bob Lucas Franklin happens to be right next door. So it'll be an exciting community event, once hopefully we get it approved from the library at the next meeting. And we encourage everybody to get involved. This is our community, so hopefully you guys, Granny was there, right? So our meetings will be here. Yes, we had to move it because of the holiday. All of our meetings will be the first Thursday here in the community center. Again, the main concerns are speeding, walkability, bicycling safety have been our top three or four issues, so it'll be really exciting. We'll be posting the minutes with the highlights of the conversations after this town council meeting, so you'll be able to see everything on Altadena Town Council under Committees, Safe Streets. And Veronica, do you want to briefly mention what's happening with CalWALKS?
As Dot said, the Safe Streets Committee received a grant from the state, it's from the state of California, California WALKS Program. And thus, the committee decided to choose Jackson as the pilot school for safety and it includes pedestrian and bicycle training. On August 15th, the committee will be observing the kids coming and going from school. And in September, we will have a community in our census tract around Jackson, what is it, a workshop that will include them. And what happens from these, why they are so important, is because the documentation and the numbers and the information we get from that, we can take it to the county and ask for stop signs. We can apply for grants and say, we've already done the studies and we are in need of more traffic control. So I'm saying, Jane, I'd like you to participate and come to Safe Streets Committee and find more about it because it gives it more credibility when the actual residents that live across from the school are there. So, okay, thank you, but that's, that's it. Our grant is great, so.
Right, so just to clarify, of course, partnerships are key since we're a town council that doesn't bring in grant funding. But we have also been actively, it's been really exciting because we've actually been working with Los Angeles County Public Works. Andrew Ross came and Matt Dubio. So we've been having some really great open communications with the county, also identifying the next streets that are going to be going up for, you know, repaving and different construction elements, Washington and Allen, to really have our community start thinking, you know, and looking at it and just being in touch with that. And also, the Highway Patrol has also joined our meetings, Officer Uyoa and Officer Norton. And we discovered that they actually teach bicycling and pedestrian safety as well. So they're going to be also participating with our community and our schools. That's it.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry, the last thing is our Go Human project will only go forward if the library, because the library will be our grantee for the Go Human community grant. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Altadena Community Reports, the library. Okay, Mr. Roy.
Good evening, councilmembers and ladies and gentlemen of the community. It is nice to be back here again. I have our newsletter, as always, to pass around, so let me go ahead and do that. And for those of you in the audience, if you want one of these, you can download them from our website or pick one up in the library. We have plenty of copies for everybody. But I try not to print a whole bunch of them out and leave them back there because I'm told they're sometimes there the next day, so. You can download them on your device. Really quickly, since Councilmember Wong was just speaking about this, on page six at the bottom, there's a little tease to the coming soon, the pop-up bike skills workshop at the Bob Lucas Branch. And we've been working with Councilmember Wong to do this initiative. And by working with her, I mean we've been letting her do all the work and we just opened up our parking lot to all of the great things she's doing there. So we really appreciate your work on that, thank you very much. As you mentioned, this will be in our, in our board report and our coming up board meeting next Monday, and we're all very excited to do this. Another thing I'd like to mention is that we have partnered with LA Works to do this back-to-school backpack and school supplies drive for children who are transitioning out of homelessness. We have receptacles at both the main library and the Bob Lucas Branch. If anyone has an inclination to purchase some cool school supplies or has backpacks that are gently used or wants to purchase a new backpack, you can drop those off at either of our locations and the volunteers at LA Works will pick those up and make sure they're distributed to people of need. Since Monica and Marge were nice enough to mention about our election, I will say that on the front page of the newsletter, there is some links here as well as the dates for the filing period. And you can go to our website for more information. There's more information at www.lavote.net. But I did want to say I appreciate what NBBA is doing to get the word out for the election and educate voters in that regard. Couple of other things to put on your radar for Save the Date. Toward the end of our summer reading, we're in the middle of our big summer reading push right now and hopefully everybody is participating in that because we have weekly prize drawings and you don't want to miss out on those. But at the end of summer reading, Saturday, August 18th at 6:00 PM, you can see this at the bottom of page three of the newsletter, we are having a viewing out in the parking lot with a big movie screen. We're watching The Wizard of Oz, we're having a picnic-style evening. There's going to be song and dance. There's these very creative troupe of people called the Haiku Guys and Gals who come out with their old-style typewriters. We had sponsored them to be at the farmer's market, at this past farmer's market. And what they do is they dress up in their, in their old-style suits with the typewriters and they will listen to you talk just for a couple of minutes about your interests and your life and then they hand-write you this haiku that is tailored to your whole experience. It's very, very cool. One of our staff members, one of our staff members who is into true crime went to Haiku Guys and Gals and they wrote them this amazing haiku, which I could not even begin to recall off the top of my head, but it was something to the effect of, you get most of your entertainment from the back of a milk carton, but hey, at least you read. So it was perfect for a true crime aficionado and I just thought they were amazing. So they're going to be at this event on Saturday, August 18th. So definitely come, come by and hang out with the neighborhood crowd and enjoy yourself for a while. The other thing that we're just putting on people's radar is that our Taste of Dina Wine Tasting, which is a fundraising event that goes to support the Altadena Library Foundation and the funding that they help us with, is going to be Saturday, September 29th at 7:00 PM. This is something that you purchase a ticket to enter and it goes to help fund the library. So it's just something we want to make people aware of, that date. We did it last year for the first time and it was a, it was a very successful event. They raised over $14,000 in that one night. So that's just something we like to make people aware of, that's coming up on the horizon. And that's it for my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions from councilmembers? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
I know that, oh, okay. Councilmember, no, Jembof Comas. I was going to say Councilmember Malone, but Mr. Cauliflower. Yeah, you did. Yeah, you're here.
Yes, thank you for having me. First of all, I assume everybody is aware, and if not, I'm more than happy to make this announcement, that our own Webster's Community Pharmacy has been recently honored by Assemblymember Chris Holden as California Small Business of the Year in his Assembly District 41. They had that ceremony in Sacramento last month. And in a meeting I had with Victoria and Billy Malone, the idea for a celebration and recognition was born. And I do have to take this opportunity to apologize to the council because you were included in our marketing material and that was an oversight of mine or an assumption on my part that the council was made aware of it. Really, the concept was just to have the chamber and the council work together to acknowledge and recognize the Webster's Community Pharmacy and the Millers for their award and their achievement. Even though your bank account is fat, dumb, and happy and we're not asking for any money, we, we are hoping that really the council will support the event in getting the word out, hopefully attend. The event is a week from Thursday at the Altadena Town and Country Club, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. There is a $10 admission fee, but lots of great appetizers and drinks are, will be included in that. And I learned the other day that Assemblyman, Assemblymember Holden will be there as well. So hopefully we look forward to seeing you on that. It should be a nice evening and. July 26th. Ask me these tough questions. Okay. Secondly, the chamber is going to participate in LA's largest mixer. It will also be held on July 26th, it's from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Pasadena Convention Center. This is a very large event. They expect in excess of 2,000 people to be there. So we feel it's, it's good exposure for the business community of Altadena and the community in general. So we will have a booth there, we will be supporting the event. More details are available on lamixer.com. Okay? Victoria? Unfortunately, it's the same date, so the 26th of July as well. 4 to 8:00 PM, the Webster's event is 5 to 7:00. So if you want to do both, it's possible. And then lastly, the chamber, we are getting ready to launch our long-awaited new website. We will have a mailing going out to members tomorrow, letting them know it's coming. It's been a collaborative effort, many people on the board and we're very excited about it. It's primarily a consolidated database and dues monitoring system that will enable us to much, much better serve our members and thus the community. So we're very excited about that. We fully anticipate, we've done, you know, a lot of planning and thinking, but I'm sure there'll be some glitches and there'll be mechanisms for you to let us know. But be patient, let us know your concerns, issues, questions so that we can get them resolved as quickly as we can. That's the end of my report, unless anybody has any questions. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. Collaborate Pasadena, Councilmember Sanjika.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Collaborate Pasadena Leadership Council did not have a meeting last month, so as a result, I don't have a report to share with you.
Is that your report?
I'm sad. Our next meeting will be July the 25th and that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. LA County, okay, that's the one that will not be, okay, so we're skipping that one. Forty-first Assembly and we're going to have Ann Hickebar.
My report will be even briefer. But thank you for the opportunity to remind you once again that Assemblymember Holden's annual block party is August 4th, Saturday, from 11:00 to 3:00, 500 block of Jackson Street, which is pretty much out in front of his house. And we have about 25 exhibitors coming from various county and city agencies. So there'll be a lot of information available to the community about city and county. be a lot of information available to the community about city and county services, and we'll have an auto show as well. So, thank you very much, look forward to seeing you. Yes, ma'am?
Do you have a flyer?
Question, and I don't know if...
I do, I have flyers, but I'll have to get them out of the car, leave them in the back, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
When you leave town council, is there an opening for, are you wanting still somebody from town council to be on the 41st Assembly, or is she gonna stay on?
I don't have an answer for you yet about that, but I'll get back to you on that, definitely.
If, you know, she would, people that would like to participate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you so much. Census tract report, and 460301. No report?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
It's 9:00.
Yeah, it's 9:00. We gotta make it 9:05.
I knew.
Not yet, not yet, not yet. Not yet, I have skipped a lot of things, because I wanted to make sure that we got done very quickly.
So, you're involved?
Yes, I do.
At number 8.4 for this.
No, we had a lunch.
Okay. Just a few announcements or comments, I know that with the heat wave that we had, there were some power outages, and the community were really out there, they did let Edison know what was going on, and thank you, councilmember Lee, for following up, and I hope that you did have power restored. I also want, these are just comments I want to make to have the community know that there's a lot of things that are going on. The New York Drive Project, there is, they're looking into the trees that will be planted, so different trees, and they have the real people abreast to make sure that they have the right ones there. There was a request, again, I'm just mentioning this because of the many emails that has been coming through to the Executive Committee, Environmental Steering Committee, so some people probably have seen or heard about that, regarding the sensitive ecological areas. And thanks to the chair, to the land use committee mentioning the registration for the fences and hedges, these are some of the things I had, but I didn't get to it. There is also a, I'm not sure when we're going to have that, the Habitat for Humanity program, there's a community outreach for home repairs, so we will be looking at bringing that to the community. There's also a survey, the Los Angeles County Home Sharing Survey, and I believe that's gonna end soon, so the county's looking for feedback on whether home sharing has positive benefits or negative impacts on unincorporated communities.
Can you just clarify, that's really people that are having Airbnbs, I mean, are calling it home share, but it's, so people really know what it is?
Okay.
Yeah, you know what I mean? It's a euphemism, Airbnb is a brand, so it's the generic for Airbnb, so if you're interested in giving feedback because you have Airbnbs in your neighborhood, that's what that is.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, I think you just did, that is the ABNB, so it's, I guess, a misnomer.
No, that's like saying Kleenex as opposed to tissue, so home sharing...
Home share and ABNB.
Tissue, no, home sharing is the generic reference to all of the, all of the Airbnb, the, you know, the, all of those ones, but I want to make sure when we're saying home sharing, everybody knows what that is, that's all.
Thank you so much for the clarification. So, hold on one moment, let me run through this very quickly. There's also a Los Angeles County Regional Planning Commission Density Bonus Ordinance, and this will be in August. So, again, there's a lot of things going on, so...
Can you say it again, please? What ordinance?
Density Bonus Ordinance. Density, density, D-E-N-S-I-T-Y.
I understand the word, it may have something to do with home sharing, or no, back, second units in your backyard, I think, maybe.
Okay.
That's what I think.
So, again, all this, what we'll do is, all the upcoming events, we will place them on the town council websites and put a link, so that people can find out what's going on, especially those things that impact Altadena. So, we really want you to get to our website, which is www.altidinatowncouncil.org, so that you can really be aware of what's going on. As I get them out, try to publish them and forward it to the councilmembers as well. All right? Okay, that should be it for me. And questions?
Thank you. This was, it sort of dovetailed on what councilmember Marcusson was asking. I wanted to know, are you aware of a program by the county that states if a resident has a, builds a room onto their existing property for a homeless person, that the county will provide the funding for that?
The county had a pilot program for additions, I guess, the granny, granny flats, but they're still working on that. I actually participated in one of the, it was a webinar, and they were just giving, sharing information, so I believe it will get to, a formal position will be taken, so at this point, nothing is taken.
They're calling it a granny flat?
No, I'm just, lack of a better adjective to express that, so I'm just saying like a granny flat, but it's not. So, there is a program that the county was putting up some money for individuals that qualify under that program, and I think new construction was like $75,000, and existing conversions was $50,000, but that program is already closed, it was only a test pilot, and if the county now approves that, then it will become, yeah, well, they'll make a further determination as to how that program is going to work.
I see. Okay.
All right. So, there's a lot going on, and hopefully, we can get everybody informed, but the website, and again, I thank now Mr. De La Torre for your help with the website, so a lot of important information. All right?
Ready for...
I will now annotate a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So, there's a motion, and seconded, and let's see, what time is 9:09?